Good evening. This is the Tuesday, October 3, 2023, regular meeting of the Flemington Borough Planning Board. This meeting is called Pursuit of the Provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Both adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication. The Hundred and Hundred Democratic Referee or News Newspaper is honored about January 19th, 2023. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of the Borough Flemington Municipal Building here at 38 Park Avenue, and any handicap accessible entrances there, too. Host of the municipal website provides the municipal clerk to the shift of all persons if any requesting copies of same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and made for rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Let's get everyone, please, to rise as you're able to comply. ... of the United States of America. And to the revival and children's stands, on the nation under God, in the vessel with the Lord in its heart.
Diane Farrell, here. Councilwoman Lawrence, here. Mr. Champion?
Here.
Josh, then?
Here.
Mr. Levin?
I'm here.
Mr. Crow?
Here.
Miss Giffen?
Here.
Ms. Whitman?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Samino? Mr. Apple?
Here.
Mr. Show?
Her.
Ms. Kaczynski? Mr. Carrico?
Yeah.
Mr. Traubman?
Here.
And Mr. Harris?
Here.
And Ms. McVannas is next.
All right, thank you. Before we get started, I just want to extend condolences myself on behalf of everybody to Karen Giffen on the recent loss of her mom. See that she is here participating remotely and so Karen and sympathy is good to do. Item one on the agenda this evening, as always, is a period for public comments for items not currently in front of the board. I see we have a number of participants here. If you are here about something that's on the agenda, I'm thinking perhaps 37 Mine Street. If you're here for that, there will be opportunity to speak later. But if you're here for any other public comment, now is the chance to do that. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
Oh, historic. I'm just here to make a general plea to this board for all applications that come before you on behalf of the planet and the people that live in this community and the wider earth, that you make sustainability and green vegetation and trees a higher priority. I continue to have concern for the temperature rise in this community in the summer because we don't have enough tree cover. And so I'm asking you to be especially diligent in making sure that we get as much tree cover and vegetation and as little impervious coverage as possible. Any application that comes before you, whether it's just a change in use, whether it's for some big super redevelopment project, whatever, please. There's just so much research that shows what's happening because of the warming of the earth. And it is our responsibility in this community to do whatever we possibly can to avert this horrible racist effort. So please, the other thing I wanted to make a plea for is curbing, curbing. This community apparently has a variance that requires all this curbing. I've been in other communities where curbing is not required, where the water can run into grass and ground, so it's filtered before it goes off to the waterways. So I ask that this board carefully consider. And if our ordinance is required that you give variances for everything else, so you could give a variance for curbing in lots where it's not really necessary to divert the water to a catch basin and send it off to the river unfiltered by the earth. So please, I ask you to be very diligent about the well-being of our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Yes, if you could come up and use the microphone, just identify yourself for the record. I don't know how tall the person is.
That's me. Diane Becker, former at 44 Stangle. I'm just trying to get any idea from anybody to dispel some of the rumors that are going around. Please give us any type of status on what is going on with the Liberty Village. Some of the businesses, such as myself. We start doing our yearly planning, our yearly events, and we'd really like to have a little bit more detail on anything you can give us on what may be or may not be happening. Liberty Village. Thank you.
Right now, there is nothing from Liberty Village in front of this board. It is with the Borough Council, so I have no update other than what council could do.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else, we will move on to item two of the agenda, mayor comments.
I was just going to say what you said, Mr. Josh, every thirty years, mom, you have the council mayor and council. So travel, we saw in the last, Karen, I guess, in the long struggle. And it's amazing.
Thank you, Mayor. Council comments?
Well, we, I definitely want to express my condolences to Karen as well. We've all, you know, watched her go through this the last few years and remember what you. I do want to mention that the mayor and I had the pleasure of attending the Go Hundred and, which is the former Hart Hundred and area rural transit, new name, same organization, annual awards breakfast, what, a week and a half ago? And in particular, the borough received an award as well as the school district and our police just acknowledging our continuing efforts to provide safe passage for pedestrians, specifically going to school, et cetera. So I want to make sure that this board is just reminded that it is a goal in our master plan to provide safe passage and quality pedestrian experiences. And there are initiatives in town that have been recognized by Go Hundred and, and I really want to thank them and everybody else that worked on the projects that did get awards for that program.
Thanks, Susan. Item four is comments from the HPC, Dennis.
I have four quick items. We approved a new porch on 7 Benell Street. The HPC sent recommendations yesterday to the planning board to expand the historic district to add 36 properties. That was work done back in 2019. Also, just a reminder, on September 1st, Eileen sent the HPC comments on 37 Mine Streets. So you should all have that. And then last, the HPC is sponsoring a walk and talk on October 21st at 10:30 a.m. in front of the courthouse. It's free. We just asked that people sign up on the HPC website. That's it.
And so the report from the HPC regarding the, there are recommendations or visions to the historic district. Is that, does that start here? Does that, is that, where does that kind of process go?
So this board has the ability to review the recommendations in connection with its master plan and make revisions to the HPC portion of its master plan. From there, the map, if those recommendations were ultimately amended, you might have to amend, need to be changed to incorporate additional properties. And I also would want to check to see if the zoning map also might need to be looked at. I know, and I told what we looked at a couple of years ago when this came before us. So I have all the little research and information, so we can figure out what we just got, by way of procedure. But yes, it's originating here.
Okay, so we wanted to schedule a time for that presentation by the HPC. That would be the next appropriate step.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so I, and Dennis, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for other people. I know clearly having John Hatch would be kind of critical to making this happen. So we have items already on our agenda that we're seeing on October 24th. We have a meeting on November 14th and the 28th as well. Is there anything on those?
Not at this time.
So Dennis, can you and HPC see if one of those two meetings in November might be amenable for schedules and folks who need to be here? And then we can put it on the agenda for that presentation.
Or it was November 14?
And 28th.
28th, got it, okay.
Great, thank you. Item five on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from our September 19th, 2023 meeting. This has been previously circulated. Can I get a motion on the minutes?
So.
Second, Samina.
Any discussion, clarifications, or corrections?
Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Everhart? Yes. Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Mr. Crow? Miss Giffen?
Epstein.
Ms. Whitman?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, item six on our agenda is resolutions, people, for 15 memorializing actions taken by this board related to the TSD Flemington Apartments, LLC, block 39, last three and four, 78 Church Streets, approval of preliminary final site plan, which included these variances and both variances. That resolution on June 22nd is ready to go?
It is ready to go. The one part of the change, I was getting comments up until today. The voting sheet, while it's accurate, it's need to tap one top line over, or the three axes are the right place. Trent has offered to make me a nice handy, handy little table that will avoid this going forward, and I'm going to take him up on that. But other than that, you'll see the red line of changes. These changes were reviewed by the board of freshmen as well as applicants, council.
Yeah, and I didn't vote against it.
You did not.
Yeah.
Okay, everything, once it moves over, everything else.
Everything gets on the stuff. Okay.
Now, the eligibility on the agenda is.
Okay, so can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move, couple. Second, love it.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Mr. Bashan?
Yes.
Ms. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah.
Mr. Samino? Okay, all circulated clean version, not that it's simply changes recently the voting sheets for execution.
And I'll just, I'll sign that as soon as you get that.
Yeah, I'll attach all of the exhibits before we send them out.
Okay. Item seven is the resolution memorializing actions taken by the board in the matter of Flemington Real Estate Partners LLC, 78 Church Street. I know we're not there yet, so let's stay at the next meeting. Item number eight on the agenda, same thing, for 13 Brown Street. Those will be at our next meeting, hopefully. I'm just saying, hopefully.
That's all right, I'm hopeful you're saying.
Item nine on the agenda this evening is the public hearing for Central Station LLC application 2023-05, block 34, block 7, 37 Mine Street, what we know as the old Burkett's client shop and the chase of the property. I'm going to need to just look quick. Do you have, yeah, do all that, so let me just come up. You have that to panelists, if you click on, okay, there. Camera. There you go. All right, so. Arrow.
The class 20, class 3 members, wanting to recuse themselves from this application, because it does involve the V variance. There is proposed residential floor, and it was determined that a use may be necessary.
So our decision will simulate our risk.
I mean, are all the notices in order?
Yes.
What? Okay.
Right, the board has three exceptions. Councilwoman Lambert does not name or mark the preliminary exhibits, and we'll go from there.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Stephen Gruenberg, Gruenberg Law Office on behalf of the applicant Central Station LLC. As you said, this is the Burkett Supply Company property located at 37 Mine Street, block 34, lot 7. This is an exciting project for the borough because that property will be rehabilitated and reconfigured into a mixed commercial and residential with use with two buildings on it. The site currently has four existing structures on it, a commercial building, and then three smaller buildings along with gravel and driveway and parking areas. We're proposing a mixed use, which will have residential units and commercial retail business, which are all permitted uses in the DB2 district. Reason why we needed use variances, the proposal calls for residential on the first floor in the back building. So we're proposing seven units, which will be condo units in the back building, and then a mixed commercial and residential on the front building, with commercial on the first floor and residential on the second and third floors. The reason for the V1 variance is because your ordinance technically doesn't allow for residential to be on the first floor, even though your master plan makes a recommendation that that be changed in order to accomplish that. We have one C variance, which is with respect to the rear yard setback. And although we're nonconforming to that, we're actually not going to be more conforming that one presently exists on this site. So I have three witnesses this evening, and that would be Mr. Rupnerin, Eric Rupnerin as our engineer, Mr. Kyle as our architect, and Daniel Block as our planner. And we can either swear them all at once or do them one at a time as they appear.
Okay, we will swear them all at once. Before we start, we'll just get the preliminary exhibits out of the way. A mark is A1, the application and supporting documents. A2, the briefs of notice and publication. PB1 will be the HPC letter dated August 24, 2023. PB2 will be the Board Engineers Letter dated September 30, 2023. PB3 will be the Planner's Letter dated October 2nd. And PB4, the Traffic Engineer Letter dated October 2nd.
Okay.
Swear at the end.
He cries.
You swear, so you want to hear that to give this board and do the whole, do the.
Yeah.
He wanted to identify himself.
When they come up.
Okay.
Say their name and tell them.
So, Mr. Rupnerin, you've appeared before this board, but why don't you give them their brief review of your qualifications?
Certainly. Eric Rupnerin, RUP. N-A-R-A-N. I'm a licensed professional, professional engineer in the states of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I have been practicing civil engineering, site development since graduating in 1997 from Villanova University, with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I received a master from the same in 2001. And I've prepared in front of this board numerous times and in front of many of the boards throughout New Jersey.
Offer Mr. Rupnerin as an expert engineer.
Any objections?
Eric, we have your plans that I can put on the. Be sure to screen.
Yep. Pretty good. Hold on, wait a minute. Hey, would you mind tilting that log a little? Ever so slightly, this one, like the whole part? Yeah.
Like that?
No, the other way.
I'm going to.
Just a little more. There you go, we just, buddy, Kathy was all working, thank you. Lot left. I'm listening out. And so if you could give the board a benefit of the overview of the site, we'll plan on it.
The property in question is identified as 37 Mine Street. And that is this, I guess, somewhat rectangular semi-algebra property that's located on the northerly side, northerly side of Mine Street. The property, as Mr. Gruenberg indicated, consists of four buildings, the old Burkett's supply building, which is located right along the right of way, the front of the property. There's also a smaller, I believe this was the waste station, the building that used to have total at one, coming in time with the orange reddish color. Towards the back of the property, we have, there's an existing garage that's located towards the rear property line. That building is a little over four feet from the rear property line. And then the final building that's located on site is another garage, which is located towards the middle rear of the property. In addition to the four buildings that are currently on site, we have an existing paved parking area that's located at approximately here. There's a concrete swill that runs diagonally in a south to north direction through the property. And then there's a gravel area that's located to the west of that existing swill. Currently, the existing property is about 33,000 square feet. And the site is essentially fully improved with buildings, marking driveway, and so forth on site. What the applicant is proposing to do is to remove all of the existing improvements on the property. Our proposal tonight is to demolish all of the existing improvements and to construct two new buildings, the front building. The front building is going to be approximately 2,024 square feet. This building will be a three-story building. On the ground level will be commercial uses, and then on the upper two floors will be residential. Each of the residential floors will have one one-bedroom apartment and one two-bedroom apartment. Towards the rear will be the condominium building. This building is going to be a three-story building, ground-level garage will be located or will be constructed for each building. Each unit. And above the ground level will be two stories for livable, habitable space. Each unit will consist of a garage and a parking area in front of each garage. Along the southerly side or this right property line or the property line towards the bottom, as the board is looking at the exhibit, will be parallel parking spaces that will be constructed. The rearmost portion of the driveway slash parking area, this area here will be striped as no parking. And the reason for that striping is to provide adequate turnaround space towards the rear. In the event that someone inadvertently drives down towards the back and cannot find a parking space, they will be able to turn around within this area, including this striped parking space. The area is approximately 32 feet in depth. Towards the front and to the east of the multi, the mixed-use building is another small parking area. This parking area provides both parking for the mixed-use and the residential units that are located within this building. Also associated with this parking area will be three proposed EV parking spaces. The EV parking spaces are hatched in this general area. In addition to the parking that's located between the two buildings, the applicant is proposing a trash enclosure that's approximately 12 feet by 12 feet. And the trash enclosure will be fully enclosed. There will be two gates located along the southern portion of the enclosure. Immediately to the south of this area will be the loading zone that's being proposed. What we anticipate for this site, once it's improved and built, that the largest delivery truck that we expect to use this property and to provide deliveries will be a typical box truck. They vary in size, but they're typically around 30 feet in depth. And this loading zone, we believe, is more than adequate to allow for loading on on-loading of the, on the property. Couple of questions that came up relative to the loading zone and the dumpster area, how they will function. What we're proposing is during the time since we have to provide onsite refuse removal via a private trash hauler, we will be able to control the hours when trash can be picked up from the property. Within a one-hour period that we anticipate trash removal, this area will be signed. No loading during that one-hour period. Outside of that time period, loading will be available as needed. We believe that accommodation will allow the trash area to be emptied as necessary and adequately provide loading on on-loading for the entire facility. In addition to the buildings and the parking area, a fire retention basin is being proposed towards the rear of the condominium units. The basin will be constructed immediately adjacent to the northernly most unit of the condominium, which is this end unit here. Mr. Carrico, in his review, now we'll raise a couple of issues that we will certainly address in plan revisions. That is to create a separation, a physical separation between the end condominium unit and the fire retention basins to close. We can certainly accommodate Mr. Carrico's request in terms of revising the site plan. This basin will be entirely constructed utilizing retaining walls along the outer perimeter. Primarily that the need for retaining walls is associated with the relatively shallow water table on the property that varies. It's approximately three and a half, four feet, depending upon where you are on the property. And typical fire retention basis requires two feet of separation between the water table and the bottom of the fire retention media. In addition to that, the minimum thickness of the planting media has to be at least 18 inches. And in order to accommodate all of those various requirements, it is necessary to essentially elevate the rear portion of the site where the condominium units will be constructed and where the basin will be constructed. And given the limited area, approximately four feet between the retaining wall and the rear property line, it's necessary to essentially construct the basin utilizing retaining walls in order to adequately drain the property.
Would you like to discuss the brain amusement?
Certainly. So. Need it.
Yeah. That's true. I swear this is not.
Understood. So overall, 37 Mine Street, along this southerly property line, there's an existing drainage that has been dedicated to the borough, and the easement is 10 feet wide and it runs parallel to this rear property line. Within that easement is an existing storm drainage. It's approximately 18 inches in diameter. The storm drainage is constructed out of various pipe material. On the surface, the pipe is broken in a few places. And where the pipe is broken and exposed to the surface, it actually allows surface water from this property and the neighboring property to the south of us to actually drain and discharge into that pipe. The primary purpose of that pipe is to collect stormwater runoff from Mine Street and also a portion of Central Avenue. The stormwater runoff from the public roadway area drains into these two catch basins, ultimately drains. Ultimately drains through the pipe. Into the adjoining property. Once that storm drainage enters into the adjoining property. It runs parallel to this southerly property line and then it turns at a forty five degree angle. And then continues diagonally across the rear. Yard. And then it turns forty five degree again. And then it runs along this common property line between, I believe this is eighteen and this is twenty Bonnell. Where. It enters into the right of way of Bonnell Street. Um, the applicant has completed some exploratory work. As that, some of which was witnessed by the Borough Public Works. And within Bonnell Street. There are what appears to have been old streams within this area that have been piped over the years. And. As the stormwater enters Bonnell Street, it continues diagonally across Bonnell. Into the school property that's located to the north of us. And as you enter into the school's property. This is the overall aerial exhibit within the plans that the board has. As the storm drainage exits. Bonnell. It continues diagonally across into this parking lot. Where it then turns on a couple of forty five degree angle. Where it enters, there's towards the rear of these properties on the north side of Bonnell, there's an existing stream that runs through the borough. And ultimately into Park Avenue. The storm drainage from this property ultimately makes its way through open channel conveyance, pipe conveyance, road and pipes. Into that existing stream. What the applicant has been able to do is. The property that's located on the southerly side of Bonnell, which is highlighted here. Twenty Bonnell. The applicant was able to obtain an easement along this northerly property line. Easement. Varies in width, it's about nine feet wide. But it follows along this northerly property line and what that's going to allow us to do is to fully reconstruct that broken pipe that's on our property. The pipe will be right sized to accommodate all of the flows from Central Avenue from Mine Street and the applicant's property. We will reconstruct. The storm drainage in a more conventional typical engineering fashion wherever their angle points manholes, redness will be provided. And ultimately reconnect back to the drainage system that's located within Bonnell. The exploratory work that we completed identified. A steel pipe that's about thirty inches in diameter that runs diagonally across Bonnell, the pipe is in very good condition. Um, we've provided, um, video recordings of the inspection completed by the applicant to the borough. Earlier today, we received an alert from, uh, the Public Works Department basically indicating that the pipe is in good condition. And that we could reuse that pipe. And the applicant would not have to reconstruct any of the improvements within Bonnell. Um. The new type of, the new easement that the applicant has. Obtained allows us to install the necessary storm drainage improvements through this property into Bonnell. So essentially what we will do as a part of this project is reconstruct the entire drainage. Along this northerly property line through the applicant's property. Dedicate the appropriate easement instead of borough for public maintenance of that existing public storm sewer system. That will all can be completed as a part of the applicant's proposal.
That acts as a benefit. Not only to our properties, but additional property within the area?
Correct.
And how so? Can you explain that?
So currently the existing storm drainage that runs through our property. Runs diagonally across the rear property line and then runs perpendicular to this southerly property line. All of the angles in the, in the storm drainage has no access to the surface. The pipe can easily become clogged. Typically with storm drainage, whenever you make any change in direction, you have to provide a mechanism to clean. The system out, usually those consist of, uh, manholes and or storm drainage systems. Those angle points, when stormwater changes directions, typically that's where you start having sedimentation. Velocity slows down and he said, and then debris in the pipe starts to settle out and over time it builds up. To the point where you start to diminish the capacity of the pipe. Factually speaking, when we inspected this portion of the pipe. The American Pipe Cleaning Company that did completed the inspection. We actually had to get the pipe cleaned before we could get the camera equipment into the line. And there was a lot of debris, bricks, broken pieces of the old terna pot of pipe that had to be removed. And those were all debris that essentially built up into this pipe over many years. Due to the fact that the pipe is up to the surface, gravel, debris, sediment washes in. The fact that there was no means of realistically cleaning the pipe. So part of what the advocate is, is proposing is going to be a typical storm drainage design where, wherever there's an angle point, there will be. Inlets or structures proposed that will allow us to have access to the pipe number one to locate the pipe number two. To adequately clean and maintain the pipe as necessary, thereby maintaining the conveyance of that entire drainage system. So any potential capacity issues that may have existed upstream of the pipe system will be eliminated. This change will allow all of the stormwater to freely flow through the pipe. Ultimately and into the stream. That's located on the north side of Bonnell.
So now compared to say that in other words. Pipe will be repaired. It'll be up to current standards. And it will be a benefit to any, uh, of the air properties within the area that drain into it because it's going to be. Uh, function better.
Correct.
So, um, why don't you address the parking calculations for the board and, and we don't require any parking here.
Correct. So the applicant is proposing. Two one bedroom apartments in the mixed use building, the front building and two, two bedroom apartments.
That was one of the comments that board professionals had to clarify that, that where it's two one bedrooms and two, two bedrooms in that front building, correct?
Correct. And the ground level or the first floor of the mixed use building will be general commercial space, um, that we're proposing. In addition to that, the seven units. In the condominium building, which is the second building to the rear. Each unit will consist of three bedrooms. Utilizing RSIS criteria for parking demand, also the borough's requirement for commercial space. Within the front building, the mixed use building. The site actually requires thirty two parking spaces. What the applicant is proposing is twenty nine parking spaces. Which includes the three EV parking spaces. Taking the credits available for the EV parking spaces, we're actually proposing in accordance with the regulations thirty two parking spaces, whereas thirty two parking spaces is required. So the applicant's part proposal is fully compliant in terms of the amount of parking that's necessary. For a commercial building. The residential apartments within the mixed use building and the condominium building located towards the rear.
Um, Mr. Clerico's correspondence raised an issue because on the architectural plans, we had yoga studio. Um, and whether that was a health or, uh, uh, health club or that had a different parking requirement. And we as the applicant are agreeing to just have that be a commercial space. As opposed to a yoga studio because we're not sure who the eventual tenant will be, but. Whatever that tenant will be, will be a commercial. Use in accordance with the ordinance and that ordinance standard, correct?
Yes.
And therefore we comply with the ordinance standards.
Correct.
We talked about lighting.
So. The lighting plan that we developed for the site includes pole mounted fixtures. Um, the applicant is not proposing any building mounted lights aside from the normal downlights that you may find on a residential dwelling, um. Those lights would be recess. And they would be located along the front of the building. The, the pole mounted lights that we are proposing are twelve feet in height measured from ground level. The lights are fully compliant with the ordinance requirements, all of the lights are going to be LED, they're full cutoff light fixtures. Meaning that above the actual plane of the light itself, there's no uplight that's being projected. The pole mounted lights are going to be located along the edge of the driveway. There's one approximately here, second pole mounted light will be located here. And then the third pole mounted light will be located here and the remaining two lights will be located within the islands immediately in front of the condominium building. The lights that are proposed adjacent to the condominium building, those lights are, again, they're all. Fully shielded, shielded fixtures. They also have house light, which will prevent any backlight towards the building. The lighting plan that we have prepared. Provides adequate lighting. Along the parking area. With minimal spillage onto the adjoining properties. Um, there were a couple of comments in the review memos that we have to provide additional spot elevation, light intensities along the property lines. And we can certainly revise the calculations to provide light intensities throughout the entire property. But essentially our lighting plan consists of a total of seven pole mounted light fixtures, um, excuse me, five pole mounted light fixtures. That's distributed. Throughout the property and each fixture will be twelve feet in height.
There was a comment, uh, about the elevation of the lighting, uh, in terms of the film, did you stress that?
One of the comments contained in Mitch McManus's, uh, memo is the typical detail that we show for the light stanchion. Is a concrete base and depending upon where it was located, it would either be six inches above the ground or two feet above the ground. Our recommendation is to make the base flush to the proposed grade and the applicant is agreeable to that, the light. Basis will be fully embedded in the ground. And no portion of the actual foundation of the light will be exposed.
Let's go to the residential building, the total residential building. And we're proposing that there's no subdivision here that these are going to be condo units, correct?
Correct.
And one of, one of the questions was, um. The sliding glass doors to the rear, um, are there going to be a patio and any separation of those units to the rear? And what is the applicant proposing?
So our proposal will be to construct an on brief patio along the rear of each one of the condominium units. The three bedroom residential units. The patio, each patio area will be approximately six feet by ten feet, sixty square feet.
And the second floor will have a balcony about that?
Correct, on the floor plans, the second level, I believe included a julian balcony and what we're proposing is an elevated deck, same size as the patio area below.
And that, um, will add some impervious coverage to the site, correct?
Correct.
Um, but will we still be confined with the impervious coverage standards of the municipality?
Yes.
And in order to give privacy to those unit owners, or will there be any type of proposed fencing, uh, along in between them?
What we're proposing along the partition wall that separates each one of the condominium units. Will be to construct a fence that extends perpendicular to the back wall, but in line with the partition wall between each unit. And that fence will extend in a northerly direction towards the property line.
Um, but there'll be, the, uh, property will be, um, in a condominium association. It, it will be part of, uh, homeowners association.
Yes.
And that, that will all be common.
Correct.
There was a question, I think on one of the plans, we had a playground. Located in the lawn area, we're not proposing a lawn, a playground.
Right.
That's just the, the open space?
Yes.
And that's to provide privacy to the, uh, unit owners somewhere behind your house, that's a thing.
Correct, essentially this area, the only way to access this area is through the individual units. So a playground wouldn't be practical in this area because it wouldn't provide us the ability to access it without having to walk through the rear yards of the unit.
Why don't you go through, or those report and just address some of those questions that I think she had when, sort of asked us others, like. If we address. Most of these, but, um. The area toward the loading area, um, you asked me for, uh, providing printing templates. Do you can do that, correct?
Yes.
And you discussed how, um, since the access and traction social will be achieved in the loading space.
So. Access to the enclosure, the gates are going to be facing the southerly direction. Trash truck enters off of Mine Street. And during trash pickup, this loading zone. This loading area will be signed, no loading within that time period. Gates will open and then the truck, trash truck will be able to pick up the dumpster or the. Whatever refuse contained will be handled. Empty the refuse into the truck. In order for the truck to exit, the truck will back. Out of the loading area. Essentially perform a K turn maneuver within this parking area. And then exit the property back onto Mine Street.
I think Mr. Clerico and Mr. Dropman asked the same question with respect to the EV parking spaces. When you describe how they will.
So what we have done is the aisle between. The loading area slash dumpster. And the parking spaces adjacent to the mixed use building, the island is twenty seven feet. And within twenty seven feet, assuming that all of the parking spaces are occupied. And the loading zone is occupied at the same time, street legal trucks are eight feet wide. Depending upon where they park, if they're fully contained within the loading zone, assuming that they essentially. Stay along the edge of the loading zone, that allows us or provides us twenty seven feet. Where anyone utilizing the EV space, they can back out. And perform a K turn maneuver within this twenty seven feet wide aisle in a little bit normal twenty five feet. Isles and turn around in order to exit the site. Typically the loading zone, if it's occupied, it may not be occupied for within fifteen or twenty minutes during loading and unloading activity. When the loading zone is available, this area for turnaround increases from twenty seven feet to thirty nine. And that's more than adequate for a car to turn around within this area.
Um, Mr. Clerico recommends to amend the site plan to include the show and no stopping standing zone along the entrance driveway area.
And we can certainly provide additional signage and indicating no stopping or standing within this area.
Um, and, uh, ask that the board should condition approval on granting of Title thirty nine jurisdiction, or even we have to.
Yes, we are.
Um, with respect to site grading, he's recommending that the geotechnics clear be retained. Uh, to oversee and that the plan should be revised and willing, willing to do that.
Correct.
Why don't you talk about the stormwater management and the current regs and what we need to do to impress that?
So recently, essentially July twenty third, we lead, NJDEP changed. The requirements for stormwater management. They're requiring the analysis of a project to basically look at current conditions and then give future build out conditions. They're requiring the analysis of a project to basically look at current conditions and then give future build out condition or future condition. And essentially what the state did is increase the rainfall intensity for the 24 year, for the 24 hour storms for the 210 and 100 year storm events. And what that essentially does to our project, it's going to require an enlargement of the buyer retention basin to provide additional storage so that once you compare your existing conditions and your developed conditions. Any routing or storage slash detention that's required to meet the peak rate of runoff requirement. Can be met for the 210 and 100 year storm. The state did not change the requirements for reduction, 50% for the two year. 25% reduction for the 10 year, 20% reduction for the 100 year storm. Those requirements all stayed the same. What they did change is the range of design storm intensity. So for instance, the 100 year storm went from ACFS, which are eight inches over 24 hours, which is typically what we would use now, but for the future condition, I believe that goes to 11, 11.3 inches of rainfall within a 24 hour period. And but you would apply the same intensity for the existing condition. So it increases your existing conditions peak rate, but it also significantly increases your default conditions. So taking those changes into consideration, I've completed a preliminary analysis of what the applicant would have to do to comply. And what we will have to do is to increase the size of this fire retention system that we have. And that can be accomplished via one of two ways. Elevating the basin so that we can provide more storage or expanding the basin into this rare open space area. And provide the additional storage that's necessary.
So the reason why I went to law school is because I couldn't understand a lot of that stuff in terms of CFUs and everything, but the ultimate response here is that we can, you're confident from an engineering standpoint that we can comply with new guidelines, new stormwater regs and provide that information and Mr. Clerco, the dissatisfaction, right?
Yes. So in order to adequately provide sewer service to both the mixed use building, the front building and the condominium building in the back. A sewer main extension will have to be completed by the applicant. We have reviewed preliminarily with the borough, the design of the proposed sewer system. And our connection point will be within mine street. This configuration, what we were proposing is a manhole on the existing sewer line. And the sewer main will extend in a northerly direction into the property. And then along the front of the condominium units. The sewer main has been designed to provide gravity flow from the end most unit, which is this northerly most unit into the sewer main. Which will then ultimately flow via gravity into mine street, into the existing system within mine street. In my conversation with the borough, there is a recommendation to change this connection within mine street. And it doesn't change the onsite designs significantly, it just changes our connection point within mine street. And the applicant is fine with those changes. In addition, what we're proposing is that water service will also be brought in from mine street. The existing public water system is located within mine street. That will extend into the property. Along the south of the mixed use building and then also along the southerly side or the driveway side of the condominium units. That water surface will be brought onto the property and then individual service will be brought into each unit. And we believe at this point, our proposal is to meet each unit individually.
No further questions of Mr. Reba. For those who haven't been to one of our meetings before, we have a specific process for questions. We have questions from the board's professionals, questions for the boards, board members and then questions from members of the public. About testimony given by each witness that comes up in order. If you want to make a statement, you will have time to do that, but that's going to be later. Right now, it's even you have it, it'll be when you have questions for other testimony given by Mr. Gray. So we're going to start with our board professionals. So Bob, please.
On the seven, I refer to the status units with the condominium aspects of this, if I buy one of those units, what do I actually own?
The interior parts of the building.
So I own the interior parts of the building, but yet I have patio and a second floor deck that extend out over the common areas of the property?
Yes.
Okay. And likewise, my driveway in front is owned by the condominium association.
Correct.
So I guess at some point this is going to turn more into a legal issue about how that, how that's associated and the, there's going to be a single condominium association covering the whole property?
Yeah, it's our understand, our intention to have a single condominium association in which you have it broken up into units like the commercial unit and the residential unit, but it would encompass the whole, whole property. That's the idea right now, but when we put that down to pen the paper, obviously Ms. Kacinski will have input in terms of creating the condominium association documentation so that you and her are satisfied that all of the common elements are covered by, by the association. How that gets broken up in terms of percentages and commercial that's responsible for this, residential, we don't have that broken down.
So under the regulations, it's feasible to do something like that. We have a mix of commercial and residential in the, in a condominium association.
And as far as, yes, I think we've actually done that before, if I recall correctly, in the cut glass application years ago, I think we had a mixed residential and commercial component where we had condominium association to handle certain things, but that was a long time ago, but my recollection is that, yeah, we could, we have done it and could do it.
And the, that condominium association would be responsible for the maintenance of all infrastructure on the side, including all stormwater management, the, the buyer retention basin.
Yes.
And I have raised a number of questions about the design of the basin, access to the basin, fencing around the basin. The, the grading of the pipes coming into the basin, you can address all those particular comments.
Yes.
And we agreed to fencing around the basin.
Right.
I'll let Jay speak more to the parking and circulation issues. On this, with the board justification, there are public improvements associated with this project as has been described here. Any approval this board might grant would obviously be subject to the applicant obtaining approval from the governing body or through the DPW or whatever of those offsite improvements. There is indicated you require the easement from adjoining property owners. Presumably that's going to be an easement, it's going to ultimately be dedicated to the borough. There's going to be revision in these plans. And right now, Eric described as part of the offsite drain is not what's on your plan. It's an earlier version of the proposal that was totally different from what we're talking about. But I, I've been in conversation with Ken Deal and met at the site and I know they've done some additional exploratory work, which I haven't seen yet. But albeit that's all going to incorporate into our plan, a revision to this plan. It's going to ultimately get the blessing of the borough for that and that's going to become a parcel of this particular site plan. So the improvements that will be installed as part of the site plan, albeit eventually they're going to be improved so that we can dedicate to the borough. So as, as the borough indicated on this 10 point easement, that they're going to also require you kind of a adjoining access easement or anything of that nature for maintenance.
At this point, no.
Yeah, because of my report later, I think that was the basis of the question.
Ken, yes. On the parallel spaces, normally those would be accessed in the same direction of flow, like on a typical street, you would enter and then exit flowing all the same way. In this case, you're entering and then how, you can't flow out, continue flowing out in the same direction. How do you get cars out of this?
I think ultimately with the parallel parking spaces. The first three parallel parking spaces, I don't think will be much of an issue because once they exit, they could back up slightly and then turn and exit. The latter four parking spaces, they would have to proceed down towards the rear. And we have a, an area that's been struck as no parking to provide a wider area where the cars can turn around and then drive out of the site. They will have to back up through the property.
Okay. And, and on the, on the exit driveway to mine. The sightlines that you show on the plan, would there be any concern with the, the parking that's permitted on mine street? Achieving that sightline with parked vehicles there?
Looking at the sightline and I believe
No parking.
On our side of the street, I don't believe parking is permitted on this side of the street. And our sightline is almost completely within the right and we'll eventually get the hang of this. So on the site plan itself. The lines that are shown from the top of the street, this sheet, this heavy dash line here. The shaded area represents the site easement, once you're stopped in the driveway. This is the portion of your sightline in both directions on mine street that would actually be on the applicant's property. And because there's no parking on this side of mine street, I don't believe there's any issue. As of this moment, there's more than adequate site distance in both directions.
Okay, I noticed hatching indicating two parking spaces in front of circuits. It was extremely faded. I don't know if that's because they don't want it anymore. If it, it, parking has been there on that side of the street. I noticed the faint hatching tick marks. Indicating parking spaces on that side of the streets. I think you do have parking on that side, but not on the other side.
Very other side.
Yes.
And your eyes were a little bit better than mine, Ken. So even assuming that's the case, that if there is parking on this side, typically when you're exiting the driveway, that normally you would stop at the, on the apron and then you would proceed slowly forward. If you were to proceed forward, site distance in the site distance in the east direction where there's no parking, yeah, any exiting car would be able to pull forward. And see any uncommon traffic in that eastern lead direction, which would allow an exiting car to basically move forward closer to the existing edge of pavement where any sightline is going to be beyond any cars that could be parked in front of the current property. So again, site distance will not be an issue.
And, and do you have any concern with the offset between that road into the site in central? Typically, if it was a strict RSI situation, they would say aligned or offset by a certain dimension. We're kind of in no man's land with that alignment.
It's, and I do agree with you 100%. It's really impossible to develop this site with a conventional alignment where the intersections would be directly adjacent to one another. Or offset by 100 feet is required. In terms of the amount of traffic that's actually going to utilize this property, the volume is so minimal in terms of the total amount of daily traffic and the peak hour traffic. I don't believe there's going to be any safety issues with the offsets between the driveway and central avenue. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
I know you, at least at the end here, I think you mentioned water and sewer. Do you have input back to the borough on the water and sewer layout?
On the sewer, yes. I don't recall seeing anything on the water where they would ask us to change anything else.
And is the sewer line on here going to be, they indicated that's going to be owned by the borough or this is going to be a private entity?
That I don't recall if we have to maintain the onsite liner, if it's going to be taken over by the borough.
And would there be any permits associated with DEP for, in order to serve two buildings with the amount, the use you have here?
So the current proposal is going to require a sewer main extension. But part of the revisions that we will have to complete in order to accommodate your comments will be, I believe to elevate the site, which may allow us to eliminate the need for a sewer main extension. If that's the case, then the onsite becomes a lateral. It's one property and we're allowed to connect two buildings. The total amount of flows into that line is going to be less than what requires DEP approval.
So Mary, and Mr. You, what some of my comments dealt with the elevation, you're proposing right now, you're going to elevate it more?
I may have to elevate it a little bit more.
To address the stormwater issues?
Correct. Primarily the bike discharge into the basin.
Do you have a sense of what that is?
No more than maybe a foot.
And so right now I indicated you're three and a half, four feet of fill that might go up to
Four and a half.
Four and a five.
Correct.
And I guess maybe it's a question of where, or the applicant, has there been any feedback from the fire marshal on this?
As of today, no.
And under RSI standards, there's certain standards for, for fire flow. And perhaps the architect or somebody could testify as a necessity for sprinkler systems on these kind of units, but has been any, the plan right now is just showing the service line coming in. I don't know the even dimensions, the size of the line, but there's like no onsite hydrants. So we don't know at the moment whether there's going to be a necessity for that or a request from that coming from the borough.
At this point, we haven't completed the analysis to determine what's necessary for fire suppression, if anything.
And has there been any, you have a rather unique sort of a circuitous proposal for electrical, I believe it's electrical, it's back in the property there. The plan is not showing transformers or anything. Do you have a sense of the feasibility of actually getting approval for what you're proposing, concept on here?
So under normal circumstances, once the project is approved and we're applying to JCP and L in order to obtain power for the property, that's when a final design is prepared. What I do not know is whether we're going to be able to use a pole mounted transformer or if an onsite transformer is going to be required. If an onsite transformer is required, we do anticipate placing it at approximately this area, which will allow us to serve right there. And an onsite transformer at approximately that location will allow us to serve both the condominium building towards your rear and the mixed use building towards your front. But if it's a pole mounted unit, then we wouldn't need anything onsite.
Well, to be a pole mounted unit, you'd have to run the aerial. And I don't think that's allowed under the orders. I believe we require underground.
I believe you're correct.
It's more for the board on this, what Eric said earlier is typically how you would do this, you would approve this. And then they would go to the power company and they come up with a detailed plan. What we found in the borough and in many other searches, where you're dealing with a really tight site like this. You end up with stuff on the property that you didn't anticipate transformers, things of this nature. I would think in this situation, before we, as a condition of any approval, we had, I think we'd want to have something a little bit more definitive back from the power company. What, you know, at least what is shown on paper, it generally flies. So we don't end up with transformers and wherever in the dumpster area or, you know, the things, somebody have a sense of landscape area, you know, you can't do it because they have underground power here and what. And going back to the point in May originally. I'm not saying this is not possible, but I don't recall ever seeing a situation where the condominium unit where the owner has improvements or access to amenities that are not on their property. And these are, these patios are not in common. These are individual patios. I buy a unit, I have a, whatever you said, six by 10 patio. It's not sitting on my property, but I, it's, it's mine alone.
I think the patio area immediately adjacent to the, the property would be part of the condo area. But outside of that patio area with the fence would be the common area that's maintained by everybody. But the, you know, that, that's something that we don't have to go into the weeds on right now, but I think there's going to be land title issues here and I don't want to use the word subdivision, but there's going to be some ownership of land that's going to go beyond a condo, a part of a building. And I think we're going to have to define it, whether that rises to the level of you require a subdivision of the property. Um I think we're going to have to define it, whether that rises to the level of you require a subdivision approval of the property. You know, we I don't think we have to necessarily deal with that tonight, but. That's why we were asking for clarification as to exactly what you were proposing here.
Yeah, I I think that. It can be done without quote subdivision approval and it it's usually done by way of an easement if if it needs to be. That the 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 condo association is responsible for the areas that are located within the condo easement. And that includes everything and. And you you formulate the, I mean, it's been a while since I've done declarations of covenants and restrictions, but that's why you have to go into the weeds on it from a legal perspective as to what. Constitutes the condo leaseholder or or not leaseholder, but.
The more common way I see is you actually own. You know, ten feet beyond your unit in the back and you own the driveway in front of you, own whatever is is defined as you're going to own. Um that's yours. And um. That was it.
So Mr. Harris, do you have any questions for the engineer?
Um I do. I have some. Um I have some operational questions. I'm not sure if to ask them now or.
We can try.
Okay. Um so just to reference my our report, uh comment four point five uh. How old like mail and delivery and I I don't think I saw.
Yeah, well, my architect will.
Any signage proposed?
Any signage is going to comply with the ordinance, so we're not asking for any variance or over signage.
Um. Will any like racks be proposed?
Architect will supply that too unless you want to do that. Hey, you can do that.
Yeah. Um so we're contemplating regarding the bike bicycle racks is two, one along Mine Street. Within the concrete area in front of the building. And then second bike rack area that we're thinking about is basically on the eastern lead side. I need to know that. Along the um this would be the southeast lead corner of the condominium units approximately in this area here.
Sorry, where was the first one?
Towards the front of the mixed-use building.
Okay. So I do have some, I think these will be for you for lighting and landscaping. Um. So a buffer isn't proposed on that rear property line. Um could you just talk a little bit about sort of any any buffering? That could be proposed. I know that space is limited, but uh.
There really wasn't any testimony on landscaping at all, so is that going to be the architect or? Well, Eric was going to defer to the architect, but we here now. So maybe just present the architecture, the landscape details for everyone's benefit and then answer the questions.
Certainly. Um so within the buyer retention basin itself, we have the typical plantings that are required by the BMP panel. Basically for a terrestrial forested community. The buyer retention, the BMP manual specifies different types of plantings that you must use within a buyer retention basin. So everything that's basically within the basin limits. Complies with the BMP manual. The additional landscaping that we've provided are street trees along Mine Street. And then we have a few landscaped islands within the actual parking area. Um for instance, there's an island here that we're providing shade tree. A shade tree, there's a couple of additional spaces towards the west of the parking area, these two spots. Directly where the applicant is also proposing additional shade trees. In addition, in addition to those trees in front of the condominium building, the. Along the islands that are basically located between each driveway, what we're proposing are a combination of shrubs. Along the current line and then also one shade tree within each island. And that's generally the landscaping that the applicant is proposing. Um what we discussed earlier. Uh with the applicant and our team is. Part of our proposal is to install a continuous fence along the property line from essentially this eastern lead property line. Towards the rear. And then continuing along the western lead side and then back towards Mine Street. In lieu of a board-on-board fence, which is what I believe we have those, uh the applicant is looking to utilize a more.
We have that.
And in lieu of a board-on-board fence that's going to require more maintenance, what we're proposing to use. Is a PVC fence, not the white vinyl fence that falls apart in a couple of years, but. This is a PVC fence that looks like a rock wall. And.
We might want to park this. It's a a great. We're not seeing it on the screen. So it's coming slowly.
It's thinking.
So who is it prepared by?
It's it's uh just a. Exhibit showing what. The type of panel it's going to look like. How would you find all types panels? Similar to one setting. For. Along Stangle Road.
Correct. I believe a few years back when we did the brewery expansion.
We're still up here.
Wow, it's here.
So you need to stop sharing just without sharing the rights. Now reshare.
Look, they got it on my screen.
Can't share again.
Share on your screen.
So this is the type of fencing that we're thinking about installing along the perimeter in lieu of the board-on-board fence to provide privacy and screening from the adjoining property. Um this fence, we used it on uh the brewery expansion a few years ago on Stangle Road. And. It's a more decorative fence. It's made of a material that's long lasting and requires very little in terms of maintenance. So this is what the applicant is thinking. About utilizing color to be determined. It'll match the finishes of the building, but essentially this will be the design of the fence. The only variation or variable will be the ultimate color that we choose to use.
And if the board doesn't like this type of fence, we'd like to hear from you, but we thought that this is better and be difficult board-on-board fence. Or light vinyl fence than I didn't think would be liked in other areas. You don't like this, let us know what you were talking about.
Board hasn't heard this upcoming application yet, but a similar issue came up. Is how high this fence can be?
Six feet.
Is there going to be any issue in terms of definition under the ordinance? But if you're putting in four feet of fill. And then putting a a six-foot fence, is that going to raise any issue? Uh I really no idea exactly how you're installing this or designing it or whatever. I just, as a cautionary, I just kind of raised that as. You know, red flag.
I have not looked at the definition to see if it triggers any waivers and or variances, so I.
But the the. Just to clarify, you you're along that easterly property line, you're gonna you're gonna have fill right now, three and a half, maybe it's gonna be four and a half, whatever. Feet and on top of that fill, you have your curves and your parking lot and then on somewhere in somewhere on that elevated element, you're going to put a six-foot fence. Which under the ordinance, a six-foot fence, I believe, would be allowed along the side property line, but you're putting it on top of. A lot of that's right at the property. If I'm if I'm understanding what you're saying.
Yes.
Um you, is there any reduction in lighting levels overnight or for security lighting or?
Um we are certainly willing to reduce the light to whatever minimum is necessary, just to provide safety. Within the property. Um we haven't ultimately discussed that yet with the applicant to find out what fixtures we will turn off or. How we will go about reducing the light. Uh the LED fixtures, the modern ones we're proposing are dimmable. So we will have the ability to dim it throughout or to selectively turn off individual fixtures as needed. But the applicant is absolutely agreeable to reducing the light levels.
Um and I know this isn't you, but affordable housing hasn't been discussed. I'm sure you take that back up just.
Yeah, that will let our planner deal with it.
Thank you. Eric, any questions?
Um one clarification, one question. Um actually two questions. Uh private garbage and recycling hauler?
Yes.
And your testimony was that that no loading area. That's adjacent to the first of the seven uh units in the rear building. That would be signed for no loading within a certain period of time whenever the garbage hauler would be coming in.
Yes.
And to time to be determined based upon when your scheduling pickups.
Correct.
Um and then just with regard to the testimony on fence. I know we had in the last application, um six-foot fencing needed to taper down four feet and then required front yard. I don't know if the fence is planning on going model. We asked the department, we should look at that just to see if there's any. Will we just need a.
So long to front yards. It's. I think a required front yard based on an average of the adjoining building to the west and the building to. To the east.
It may be fine.
If it's required to reduce it to the four feet along the front yard, we will.
Okay, so if you would like to stop sharing for just a second so I can see the rest of the board. Uh for questions, uh Mr. Ruipnareen, I'm going to go uh to remote folks first. Hannah, do you have questions?
Um. I'm not sure if this would be something for for him to answer or not. It's just there was no proposed landscaping within that one lawn area, right? Did you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. These are these are setups.
Got it. Got it. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry.
No, but I just want to confirm it.
Correct.
But we're willing to work with the boards professionals if there's certain landscaping that's requested in that area. We have our experts professionals. I should look. That's my line.
Great, thank you. That was it.
Thanks Hannah. Um Dennis, do you have questions?
Just one question on the lawn area. Um how would they cut the grass back there? It sounded like there was fencing behind each townhouse. That enclosed each area. Maybe I misunderstood that. Um how would they get back to that lawn area?
So part of the revision that we'll have to make to the detention basin design is to essentially not have it connected to that nor to the most here at the end unit. So part of that revision is going to be to separate out the detention basin, the modern pension basin from the unit itself, which is actually going to create an access to that rear lawn area.
Okay, thank you.
The the um. Maybe you can pull it up to. The fence between the units in the back only extends to the end of the patio. It doesn't go all the way to the property line either, so you can get behind those units because that's going to have to be maintained as well.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood that. Thank you.
Thanks Dennis. Uh Karen. No questions. Uh do you have any questions? No questions. Mike, do you have any questions?
Yes. Eric, have you reached out to the DEP if a TWA permit is needed?
I have not spoken to DEP yet. Um. And a TWA per the treatment works. Will be required for a sewer main extension. But if we're able to revise the design to basically make this sewer lateral and move the sewer main, the number of buildings that are being connected and the flow rate does not trigger a TWA.
Okay, if a TWA is needed. The borough will be responsible for the sewer main onsite. No TWA, the borough will be responsible for the cleanout. Closest to Mine Street.
Understood.
Also. You did not mention uh snow removal. Will snow be hauled out of there if we have major storms throughout the winter?
I think typical snow plowing the way it normally operates in a parking lot, depending on the amount of snow, is that it's usually plowed or pushed into the islands. Um usually it's pushed over along the edge. I've seen it where it's pushed into detention basins. Um we anticipate basically if we do have a significant amount of snow. That when it's plowed, since this is a private property, that it'll get pushed into the grass areas adjacent to the parking lot.
Will there be a management company for the businesses as well?
Yes.
That's all I have, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh. Can I get like a point of clarification? Where you have grass next to the parking?
So in this area of.
Yeah, I'm sure screen. So you can keep it up there because I got everybody on the road up sort of like.
This area here directly adjacent to the loading zone.
That's not the landscape, Karen.
Uh there's. Within the island, shade trees are proposed. So for instance, there's a shade tree here. Um we can certainly provide additional landscaping if the board needs necessary along the foundation of the building. Closer to the building, but it does provide us with an area. Where snow can be moved.
And if snow needs to be removed or hauled out, it will be. Yeah, I would venture a guess if we have. If it's no force like we've had the last couple of years, it probably will be a problem. You know, any kind of significant snowfall, I think. I don't really think we have sufficient area here. I would, I would assume. And the operator, the homeowners, again, homeowners association is strictly responsible for all maintenance. That would be snow removal as well.
Correct.
Yeah, they're they're going to want. Yeah, it it part of whatever they're doing, they're going to want. They're not going to want to have stuff piled on top of bushes or blocking driveways or something of that nature.
No, that's how HOA is going to have this. Jim, do you have any questions?
Um I I was basically worried about fencing back because that would give you. Several, more than several fences going out to the back fence, but I guess we're only going to the back edge of the. The patio, so it'll be three, four feet long and that's about it.
Correct.
So that was the fence. Will it match the back or will it just be wood?
Would everything for them. I mean, it's really, it's really just to provide privacy for, you know.
For the person on the on the patio.
Other values.
Yeah.
We can match the, you know.
Yeah. Okay, uh the other part was that when you got your landscaping plan, I think there was a fairly large tree right at the back corner of the buildings. That might interfere with trying to contain. That area to try to get in with any maintenance equipment. Trees are good, but when you have to remove them to get there. Yeah, right. Yeah, the right on the left-hand corner of the building there. You, yeah, that seems to be an area where it would be a little difficult to get equipment in there to do the backyards. But if they're open all the way across, you're saying that the access to the backyard would come through by the basin instead.
So that would be one means of access. Would be along, once this provision is completed. The actual separation between the basin and this end unit. Would allow lawnmowers to get into this back area. Additionally, as Mr. Grunberg indicated. That the patio area is only six feet in depth from directly adjacent to the back of the building. And the building itself. As you can see on the sightline, the building at the nearest point to the property line is about fourteen feet, fourteen point three feet. So that provides us essentially. Between seven and eight feet from the edge of the fencing or the patio area to the property line. And that's more than adequate for any sort of lawn maintenance opportunity to be able to navigate through the back if they so choose.
Uh well, my concern was being able to get there and it seems like you're you're concentrating on getting the equipment to the back by the basin. You're not trying to get in from the other corner. I was worried about the tree being in the way of something trying to.
Yeah. I mean, typically with the deciduous trees, even though it's shown. At a larger size on the sightline, usually when the actual landscaper plan is developed. We try to use an approximation of how, what the spread of the tree is going to be. So that they're spaced adequately on the drawing. But at the time of planting, the tree is probably going to be approximately three inches. And as the tree starts to grow with the deciduous trees, the lower level. But at the time of planting, the tree is probably going to be approximately three inches and as the tree starts to grow with the deciduous trees, the lower level branches are usually. They die off as the tree gets larger and larger and only the trunk starts to enlarge itself, so. Even with the tree there at its current location, there's not going to be any impediment access in the rear.
Thanks.
Right. Uh, there's one, Bill, check Eric, you said, uh. You said there was no analysis for fire suppression, right?
Correct.
Um, and then electric. It's not air load, it's underground, right?
Yes.
Just, just, just so I can see, can you show me how many, um, just trees, just. I didn't see, is it gonna be shrubs and one shade tree in between, can you show that to me again? There's.
Essentially, within each one of the islands, what we were proposing are five shrubs and then one shade tree. We don't have more room to accommodate any additional shade tree, given the size of the island and its proximity to the house itself. Um, certainly we can add additional shrubbery along the curb line towards the main entrance of each unit if necessary.
Yeah, um, let's see, but let's start on, uh, when you raise the property from a great perspective. And to create that fire retention basin in the back. Does that handle, what, what does that do for the backyards of those posts on Bunell Street as you raise your property? Does the water flow, the water flows towards Bunell Street surface, right?
So right now, the backyard of the property, uh, there's an existing fence. And the way our property drains, it actually drains somewhat, there's a small portion of the back that flows onto the property that runs on Bunell. But the vast majority of our property actually drains towards the pipe along that western, eastern property line. And the few broken areas on the surface of that pipe is what allows the water from our property to discharge into that pipe. And then it continues on the ground through the properties on Bunell.
And, and when you fix, I think you used the word fix, you know, the broken pipes and the forty-five degree angles, um. Sounds great, that all that water flows, that stream in the backyards on the other side of Bunell Street. Is there any analysis, like when, when, when the pipe is fixed? There's a lot more water that's gonna head towards that stream in the back of. That side of Bunell, the other side of Bunell Street there. Northerly side. It is that, can that stream handle more? I mean, you're gonna make it better from a infrastructure perspective, I understand that, but it's central mine, it's a lot of water that now runs to that stream.
So under the current conditions, all of that water gets to that point. It flows, either it flows through the pipe or the area floods and it flows overland. But all of the runoff within this drainage area. Ultimately gets into those stream, it either gets here through the pipe or it gets there overland. So repairing the pipe. Actually, the way it's beneficial to your overall area is any overland flooding or overland flow that you would typically have, because the pipe is long or there's inadequate conveyance. Now takes that water, puts it into the pipe. And it gets to the stream where it's ultimately going. It's getting there one way or the other.
Okay, and, um, how much of the flow that goes into that pipe is coming from? The applicant's property versus. Beyond on mine. In other words, you're, you're building a system and a bio retention basin to hold the water off of your own property? Or will that fire retention actually hold water? Coming from across the street on Central.
So the basin only manages the stormwater from our site. The water that flows through our property from Central of Mine will continue to flow through our property. The applicant is not proposing anything to detain or to reduce the flow from those areas. We don't have the ability to do that because we don't control any of the offsite property.
Okay, and, um, the, the property that you will partially control, the easement going there, I think you said it was twenty Bunell Street. Um, easement, does that mean that that angular pipe that now goes through the owner of twenty Bunell Street is now being cleared? So will there no longer be an easement to their backyard? Twenty-five, I think the forty-five degree easement. Right, right there where you're.
So what we're proposing is this new pipe, as it gets constructed through the adjoining property into Bunell, is. This existing pipe will remain, it'll remain in its current configuration. What we will do is, and this was discussed with EPW, is. Installation of a manhole at this junction. Because currently this pipe, there may be other underground pipes that are connected into that pipe and we cannot wholesale. We'll safely abandon that pipe because it may create negative impacts to anyone that's tying into that pipe. So what we have concluded is. Right now, there's no means of accessing this pipe, we know that that pipe, instead of. Trying to create additional infrastructure within these properties that we don't control. Is to construct an inlet or a manhole at this new intersection or new junction that the applicant is proposing. That'll mark the location of this pipe where it ends. Provide the means of cleaning this portion of the pipe out. But also as we continue down with the new pipe into Bunell, that's gonna provide us with the ability to discharge all of the drainage that's coming in from Central and also from the applicant's property. And maintaining this existing pipe will not create any negative impacts to any of the existing pipes that may be connected to the system.
Okay, and so back, if you can scroll over to the right, yes, so when, again, when you raise this property, uh. Raise the grading of this property and, um. I, I just wanna make sure, based on your testimony, that, um. Fixing the pipe, raising the property, uh, or raising the grade will create an adverse condition either to the, uh, either side of this property where the water could flow surface. Surface water could flow, not get into your grade pipe and, and, and have a detrimental effect on properties to the west or the east.
So part of what we have done is with the new drainage system that's going to be proposed through our property. A portion of the property to the east of us. Drains through or onto our property into the broken section of the pipe and then it continues down towards Bunell. Our drainage system has been designed to allow that water to continue to flow into the system. Repairing the pipe is not going to create any negative impacts on the property to the east of us, we're not going to trap any water, we're gonna allow the water that was flowing into this system to continue to flow into the system. So we're not gonna have any negative impact or detrimental impacts to the property to the east. The property to the west. Which is this property. This property has some limited drainage that's been installed within the property that actually takes stormwater from the surface. Towards. Academy, which is located further. To the west of us. And stormwater that's collected by this system and the dash line along the course represents the drainage pipes that are installed within that parking lot. Ultimately ties into the drainage system within Academy and that connects into the drainage system that goes under Bunell and again into that stream. What we have done is in designing our drainage system in the back. Is to install the inlets, the top or the grade elevation of the inlet at an elevation that's slightly lower than the elevation at the property line. And that's going to allow any stormwater runoff from this offsite property, this property to the west of us that was flowing onto this property. To continue to flow onto this property. Our proposal does not trap water on any of the adjoining properties.
Okay, thank you, and, um. Uh, moving on to, uh, the landscaping that you discussed along the, the. Westward or along both of those fences, um. Would you, you testified, there, there is no landscaping along that fence, so when I'm in my. Condominium, I'm looking out over my patio, I see lawn and I see that, uh, the PVC. Fence, so would, would there be consideration to add shrubbery or some kind of greenery along the fence, so it's? Absolutely. Okay. And the same thing on the other side beyond the parking spaces, it looks like there's a small area there, it, it's hard to tell. I mean, I know there's a pipe under it.
There is a small vegetation area between the curb line and the property.
Okay, so right now, expect this.
Grass, yes.
Same, same thing, I just, uh, you know, from, uh, uh, an aesthetic perspective, as you, as you look down. Um, so there would be a consideration for some type of greenery, absolutely, probably the grass. And, um, and last, I, I, I didn't hear the answer to the fence in the back, I know that the fire retention basin is going to move. Um, but will there be this no man's land between your fence? And the fence of the bio retention basin? And how will that be handled?
So. Our proposal is that at the rear. Property, even though the building pad. And the parking area is being elevated. The retaining wall that creates the bio retention system was being constructed. Essentially at grade, the top of the wall is going to be at grade and the fence would be along the property line, so there is going to be an area there. That's not isolated by two fences or a fence and a wall. That, uh, we could certainly provide additional vegetation in that area that doesn't require maintenance or requires very little maintenance.
So there's, so in other words, the fence, the, the PVC stone. Ish fence, um, serves as the fence for the fire retention.
Yes, in that area.
Okay, okay, that's all, that's all. Okay, there are no more questions, thank you.
Okay, so I've got a few, um, Bob, go ahead, then I.
Okay, so just to. Well, sure. I wouldn't be commenting on this stuff if it was part of the plan, but since you're describing what you're doing, the six by eight patio, the six foot is perpendicular to the building?
Yes.
Okay, so. Six by ten, oh, six by ten, that. Um. That leaves you eight feet from the back of that patio to the property, the westway property.
Correct.
And in that area, you wanna put a storm drain and you wanna put electrical lines, are you sure you could do that?
Storm drain, yes, electrical service, depending on ultimately where, if we have to use an on-site. It can either come in along the back of the building or we could certainly bring this route, the electrical service along the front of the building.
Okay.
So it's, as you indicated, we'll have to start the process with the utility company to determine how.
And this question, it, it, this is a very tight site, you, you're. Fitting in a lot of pieces of the puzzle, it has to fit very well in order for this to work. Um, otherwise you could run into some. When on a normal project that has a lot of room to work with, it might not be inconsequential, but in a situation like this, it could become consequential.
Okay, so I've got a. I've got a few questions here, um. Do you have a good sketch that shows elevation, existing conditions, topograph, is that on the? Site plan, the landscape plan, so maybe one of the earlier drawings have.
So this is the.
Sure, let's, let's, that's good enough, let's, let's take that, all right, so. What, what I need to, what I'm asking is, if you've been. At the rear of the existing site. What's the elevation at its lowest?
So the lowest point is. It's one seventy-seven point two at the corner. Which would be the north easterly corner of the property. And then the grade rises up as we go in a westonly direction.
Okay, so and then, let's say it's one seventy-seven point two at that corner. What is the, at, at that, on that same eastern boundary, what's the grade, what's the elevation at Mine Street?
One eighty. One eighty point one.
So what's the difference there?
Uh, two point nine feet.
So, excuse me, are you sure of it? Oh, I'm sorry, moving, yeah, okay, so. Existing conditions are that the, the property on Mine Street is three feet higher than it is at the back.
Yes.
Roughly, rounding, sorry, okay.
Close enough.
Okay. The proposed elevation of site. To bring, um. To bring the condo structure, you know, some of the condo structure up high enough. To serve the bio detention system. What is the new resulting elevate, I know you, you may have to change this, but what's the proposed elevation?
It's got a current proposal elevation for orange floor of the end unit, which is going to be the lowest unit of the condo was, or is one seventy-nine.
Which might have to go up to one eighty.
Correct.
From what you said through this thing.
Yes.
So the. The fill that you're, am I correctly understanding, that the fill that you are proposing? Would bring roughly, this is roughly, the elevation at the rear of the property to be about what it is at Mine Street?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I'm, I'm just trying to visualize what this is gonna look like, okay? So the height of the filled property at the rear. That would be basically at Mine, roughly Mine Street elevation, just to visualize it, right?
Correct.
The fence would sit on top of that.
Yes.
The bio retention basin's wall is how many feet above this new grade?
So along the rear property line?
Yeah.
The top of the wall elevation will remain same, it'll match the existing ground elevation.
So the top of the swell is at, is at that one eighty number roughly?
So the existing. Along this rear property line.
Yeah.
Here. The existing elevation, the lowest point is one seventy, I believe, one seventy-seven point two.
Yeah.
And the top of the wall of the basin will be at that elevation. It's actually about six inches higher, I think it's one seventy-seven five.
So if I'm standing in my backyard on one of the properties on Bunell Streets. It will be higher than it is now by this roughly three feet.
Correct, at the building.
At the building line, right?
Yes.
Um. And it'll be about what it is at Mine Street.
Correct.
Okay. The fence, the fence, I'm sorry, the building, um, is there any, where does, what's the limit of where the fill is being proposed to? I, I, obviously you're not gonna fill the whole site. Or are you filling the whole site?
So within the parking area and under the building itself, and we have to fill those areas, as we approach the property line, we have to start transitioning. Down to existing grade.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm asking about the, towards the front of the property. So in the area, in the parking area between the two proposed buildings. You're showing elevations of about one eighty, one seventy-nine point eight, one seventy-eight there by the trash can, uh, trashing closer, excuse me, how does that compare to what's existing there now? Is there no fill proposed over there?
There is some fill that's proposed, so for instance. Long to trash enclosure where it's one seventy-eight, twenty-five on the pavement itself.
Yeah.
That existing grade is approximately one seventy-eight, there's the one seventy-eight contour.
So that's going up a few inches.
Correct. Now. As we approach the back of the proposed mixed-use building. The elevation, this is the one seventy-seven contour that's in the middle of this parking area. The driveway coming into the existing, the existing driveway is relatively steep at the entrance.
Yep.
Uh, so here's the one seventy-nine contour that basically runs. Along the back, here's the one seventy-eight contour, essentially that's running into the back of the existing building, so the back of the proposed. Mixed-use building, there will be about two feet of fill.
So right now, as the site has existed for a very long time, there is this drop as you enter the driveway and you go down towards, certainly what we've. Talking about about three feet down into the back. Am I correct in saying that what is being proposed here will mostly flatten out that drop, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Essentially, but in order to get the pavement to drain, it's. There will be loopholes that are created within the parking area where the inlets have to be constructed. Because having the front and the back of the property at the same elevation creates a very flat site that's vulnerable. So we're gonna have low parts of the property within, between the front and the back, that's going to be at slightly lower elevations.
You may not know the answer to this and no one may know the answer to this, but the conditions of change in elevation here, are these naturally occurring or is this a result of a hundred years of? Stangle and industrial and buckets and all sorts of other use, do we have any sense as to what? Was there in a, I, I can't say natural state, but, but, but an undisturbed, uh, kind of state?
So. Nature does not like abrupt changes, right? You, you generally don't see the nature unless it's a flick or something of that sort, generally there's. When you look at a site or you look at ground that hasn't been disturbed over time, the changes in elevations are generally smooth. It, it transition smoothly from different elevation grades. My best estimate as to what was there before is most likely Mine Street was the original elevation. And it might have been filled maybe a foot or so, maybe not much more than that, because looking at the properties to the east. Because looking at the properties to the east, to the west of mine street. That all appears to be at relatively the same elevation. There's no abrupt changes like you see on this property where you enter the driveway and then it drops off. That drop that you see along the front of this property would suggest to me that. At some point, mine street in this area was filled. That's why we have such a sharp or a steep driveway coming into the property. And then as you get towards the back of the property, that was most likely what the grades were fifty, sixty, a hundred years ago. It would not have changed much within the back part of this property. Because even on the adjoining properties, the grades doesn't change that much. And there's some relatively. Older trees or larger trees on the property to the east of us. Which the grading or the elevations along those properties, there's no significant or abrupt changes that I've seen.
So you feel that the change elevation that we see on the site right now is probably a result of people doing it. Where the next part of the maybe it's a naturally.
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. Um, the calculations that you're using to figure out flows of water and conveyance into the. Designs bioswells, bio, depending on the system as well as the, uh, these little pipe easements. Um, water travels faster when there's change in elevation.
Correct.
So, um, how? Have you, can you speak to how the designed? Uh, conveyance of both stormwater elements. May be changed by the regrading of the site, in particular. Clearly, the easing of the grade on the property due to the. Fill that's being proposed have an adverse impact on inlet flow, uh, for the storm basins at central and mine. Are we going to have pooling over there because you flattened out the site is what I'm getting at?
No, because the existing pipe that's there that's being replaced as part of the applicants' proposal. That pipe, we have full control over the slope on that pipe. And we have an elevation offsite. Which is.
That's a little time, that's a hard one.
I would agree. So essentially at approximately here where that existing pipe changes direction.
Yes.
In order for us to basically install our manhole and. Basically connect into this pipe. We're going to have to be somewhat close to the grade at that location. However, through our property, we do have the ability, we can maintain the existing pipe slope that currently exists with that pipe. And if we were to maintain that slope and not change it to the analysis, in case we don't need to change. The size of that pipe. Maintaining this slope will not change how much water flows through that pipe or will not change the rate. At which the water flows through that pipe.
Since we're talking about elevation, this is kind of an architect question, but if you know the answer, you can, if not, I'm, I'm gonna. Say it now and the architect can answer because he's sitting there. Um, at the proposed filled elevation. Um, what's, what's the, what is the height of the proposed condo building from? The, the building height of those buildings?
The total height of the building?
Or you don't have that in mind, that's fine. So when the, I, I, what I want to know is not only the height of the building. What I'm asking for is how much higher is it going to be with the building plus new fill? As in like, what is it going to feel like to the adjacent property owners relative to what's there now? There's a, there's a huge depressed lot there right now. I understand the existing conditions well. I'm just asking about. The perception, um, and impact on the view shed, uh, in the neighborhood. That, that, that's, that's where I'm getting at? No, you're not sworn in yet. So we'll get, we'll get there, we'll get there. Okay. Uh, all right. Um, those are my questions. That's to do with elevation. So.
Thank you.
Um, any other, any other questions from the board's professionals? Board members? Okay, so we usually take a break at around nine. But I know there's a public questions. So, um. In the interest of, in the interest, I know I'm going to guess that there's a number, number of members of public with questions to ask. So I don't want to interrupt public questioning of our rate. So if we could take, uh. Five-ish minute break right about now and we'll resume with, uh, questions from members of the public about.
I think, can you please, uh, uh, retake the role if you would mind stopping sharing so we can see a better work.
Great, thanks.
Yes, um, I've already mentioned Mayor Cameron Councilman. Huge before this application began. Uh, Mr. Cameron?
Here.
Mr. Doshna?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
They're here.
Ms. Kiffin?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Frozen.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Semino?
Here.
Mr. Hill? Mr. Ethel?
Here. Here.
Mr. Binsky here?
Mr. Theracan?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Cutler?
Here.
Okay, so we're up to the point, uh, for questions from members of the public about the testimony given. Uh, by, uh, yeah, it's engineer and again. Uh, questions only, please. If you start getting into statements, I'm going to have to cut you off and I don't want to have to cut you off. There will be opportunities. Make statements at an appropriate time. Uh, so ask questions of the testimony given. Uh, if there's a, if there's something that was not covered in this person's testimony or is outside their area to speak about, or it'll be a. Something that a different witness is going to bring up, we may ask you to hold your question. Um, and come back to it to, to the appropriate witness. Uh, we don't, uh, so we, but we want everyone to have a chance to ask whatever questions they might have. So. This microphone seems to not be working. So there's a microphone next to applicant's counsel there. Um, that will capture you. So if you'd like to ask a question, please raise your hand. Um, we're going to just start and go around the room. Please come forward as, as you're able and, uh. You could, because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, we need folks to identify themselves. Um, and where they live so that we, uh, have that for the record.
My name is Nancy Carmley. I live at twenty-two dash one Benell Street. Which if you can, can you pause the map?
Absolutely, we can do that.
So I can identify where I specifically live. Um, one of my questions for the engineer is. The drainage for the water. Coming in through the properties. We are currently right now working on the roads for the gas lines. I know within the next couple of months, they're going to be paving those roads. Are they planning on ripping these roads open again to accommodate these water lines? And are we going to have then deal again with roads being ripped up?
So the conversations we've, we've had with DPW and we received some resolution earlier today from. Is the work that we need to do within Benell. In lieu of. Instead of crossing into the pageant of Benell. What we had discussed with DPW is the existing culvert that runs diagonally through Benell and into the school's parking lot. Instead of connecting directly on that culvert within the pavement area. Our proposal is to construct a structure within the right of Benell, which will be in the sidewalk in the grass area. Outside of the pavement. That will allow us to connect our storm drainage. So for instance. We will continue with the new drainage along this easterly property line. Install a manhole within the right of way outside of the pavement. Extend the drainage in a westerly direction. To meet the existing culvert and. On top of the existing culvert, we're going to have to construct another structure. So all of the construction that's proposed will be within that sidewalk grass area. It will not encroach within the pavement.
Okay. So that leads me to my next question. The way that Benell Street. The landscape. Is on the road. If you're coming from Park Avenue, it slopes down. And if you're coming from Saint Magdalene, it slopes down. Where my house is. That is at the lowest point of the road. And that's where most of the water comes to those catch bases. One catch basin doesn't automatically take all of that water. And it automatically overflows into my catch basin, which is right in front of my driveway. This is, this is problematic if we're going to be now. Draining more water into this area. And we're adding in these catch basins, are these catch basins going to? Be, are we going to be able to ensure that? We are not going to overflow because the natural landscape. Of this road dips like this.
That's probably your best map is the.
So. I.
No, 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 I, I think, I think he understands the question. So I want to give him a chance to answer.
Okay, so the catch basins that you're referring to, I believe they're located approximately. And from those catch basins, the drainage continues diagonally across Benell. There's a couple of additional catch basins on this northerly curve line. From that, those catch basins, it continues into a manhole that's located. Somewhere within this lawn area. And then it continues through and into the school's parking lot. To the inlet that's located where the courser is. And then it continues from that inlet towards. The rear of the properties on the north side of Benell. Within that stream, there are actually two pipes. One that connects into this catch basin. And then the second pipe. That actually continues into the parking. And it makes two forty-five degree turns. Where it connects into the steel culvert under Benell. So our connection will not tie into any of the drainage that's currently in front of your property. It's actually a separate conveyance into that stream.
It's where it is right now. This is my driveway. That, um.
I just want the folks who are remote to be able to hear you. So I just want to make sure she's using a microphone. Yeah, yeah.
Right here. I'm, my driveway's here. It goes all the way back to the back of my property. There is a catch basin at the very end of my driveway, right in front of the apron of the driveway. It always was there and if we're going to be draining more coming down this way. And then we're not doing anything with anything from Academy. I'm concerned that it's going to continue to pour even more in front of my driveway.
So the stormwater runoff from this property will not connect into those catch basins. There are two separate pipe that goes into the stream that's located at the back of the properties on Benell. One of those inlets or one of the storm drainage connects into that catch basin. The second pipe does not connect. The connection that from mine street. From Central Avenue across mine street through our property, that is a completely separate pipe. That does not connect into that drainage system.
I want to make sure, I, I want to, I'm going to ask it to make sure that, 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 uh, the answer is. The drastic question she's asking. The existing stormwater on Benell, in which Benell does one of these things. Um, the, the, the low points of that where there are multiple storm catch basins is front of her house.
Yes.
You're saying that all of the stormwater that's on Benell, the surface runoff on Benell. That is caught by the street basins and all of the stuff that's there. That is conveyed across to the north side of Benell to. Eventually to discharge through the, through riffis and into the creek. You're saying that the pipe that you're proposing to use across Benell is not part of that system?
Correct.
It is using a different pipe across Benell.
Correct.
So I shouldn't expect any additional runoff. Coming into that area because it's a separate system?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Glad to, we can get the answer to the question. Okay, uh, other questions? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm David Moss, going to fourteen Benell Street. Um, so my question has also to do with runoff and you've talked about the elevation. Um, where I am on Benell is, um, to the. Yeah, the other direction.
Go to the right.
He's on the other side of the street.
Uh, no, I'm the same side of the street. Um, but one more answer there. Um. I have already my backyard sludge. Um, the way the elevations are, everything pitches right into my backyard and it's a swamp. I had to put in plantings just to try to absorb some of that because I'm not filling it up. Um, you talked about increasing the elevation to this property and you talked about runoff directly behind it, but you didn't. Talk about how it would then go towards me since you're already elevated and I'm lower, I'm concerned about. Receiving even more runoff, um, as a result of this increased elevation. And I'm wondering how you're going to be addressing.
So the drainage system that we're proposing as a part of this application is going to collect the stormwater runoff from our pavement areas, from our roof areas. That's the runoff that presently flows overland into that existing drainage system. Our design is not going to permit or allow any additional runoff from this property to discharge onto your property. So for instance, we're not going to allow stormwater runoff from this property to flow onto your property. So, uh, any. Issues that you're currently having is not going to be exacerbated as a result of what we're doing. We are controlling it.
Even with the elevated.
Correct.
The properties?
Correct, because along. That elevated area. We have curving that's proposed along the park, parking lot, our parking lot that is, which is going to control the runoff from this property. And on the lower side of that curving. At the base of the fill, what we have done is. Allow for as a part of the inlet system. Create essentially rear or openings within the inlet. That will allow any of that surface waters that were pond as a result of the grade elevation. To be collected into that drainage system. Unfortunately, we can't go onto your property to make any changes, but we are allowing for any of that surface ponding that currently appears in this area. To be collected by this drainage system.
Skep, statements of skepticism, we'll have a chance to, to say that later as well. Uh, let's keep it to questions, other questions, please.
Hi, uh, my name is Ellen Black. My husband and I own the property at sixteen Benell Street. Uh, which is adjacent to the easement that you're proposing for the new drainage. Um, and my question is with the proposed elevation at the back of the property. Uh, what material are you proposing to use for the retaining wall that will be visible on the back of our property?
We haven't ultimately yet decided on material, whether it's going to be reinforced concrete wall or a second block wall. Um, that's certainly something that we're open to in terms of finishes on the material. But we haven't settled on any particular style.
Um, and I also had a similar concern as David and Joseph Benell. I'm imagining a waterfall coming from, uh, the parking lot at the back of. Property into the back of my property. So I appreciate any additional information that you can provide about drainage systems and litigation. Yeah, there's about thirty feet, uh, on our property that is adjacent to. The, um, the property that you're working on, uh, that is before the, the retention basin starts. Yep, right about that. So that's the area that I'm really concerned about that we're going to have a lot of runoff.
So. What we have done is. As a part of our proposal, the current line along the parking lot is going to control any of the runoff. That was occurring, that occurred from this property and it was prevented from getting onto your property. Within the outlet structure, at the top of the outlet structure, which is this little structure that's proposed here, what we have done is to essentially lower. Lower the grade of this structure. As you can see, the elevation here is one seventy-two point, or one seventy-seven point two. And. The top of that structure has been lowered. So it's slightly lower than the existing ground. The elevation on top of this structure. Is going to be one seventy-six point three, which is lower than the surrounding grade. And that elevation. Is also slightly lower than the existing grade on at the property line. That allows any of the water in this area, instead of having it flow off into your property, it'll flow into the top of that structure. And into the collector's system. You're welcome.
Sure. We, we want everyone's questions answered.
Okay, um, in terms of the lighting, will any of the proposed light fixtures shine light into the, uh, property?
So what we have done, instead of installing the light fixture along that common property line, their, the fixtures are being proposed to. In front of the. Condemning units. These are proposed fixtures. There is some light spillage onto the adjoining property. Uh, the spot intensity or the numbers that you see is one foot candle, which is virtually nothing.
Explain for those who don't know what a foot candle is.
It's a measurement of how bright of surfaces or the light in that particular area. Normally you're permitted in most ordinances, putting two foot candle at the property line. And then that's considered an acceptable spillage because it's such a low level of light. In our particular case, it's point one, point one, point one, count one. And then as you get into the property, it actually diminishes to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Hi, Brian Beckenbauer, twenty-two Benell Street. Um, could we see the, the light intensity on the? To the, I guess, the north.
It's here again.
And then just go. Yeah, I guess, as far as model it. So I guess, what are the values in the?
Zero.
And then for the bio retention basin, basically if I'm walking up to it, is it a hole in the ground? That, that's why it ponds in?
Yes.
To the way that the storage drive.
Correct.
Okay, and then what um, would be the depth from the adjacent grave to the bottom of the basin?
So the current proposal, the bottom is an elevation of one seventy-five. And the top of the proposed wall is one seventy-seven, one seventy-seven and a half, one seventy-eight. So the highest is going to be about maybe three feet deep adjacent to the building. The center there was about three and a half to four feet.
And then what um, period of time do you expect there to be water standing in it? And is that going to pose a problem with vector control for mosquito breeding in the summer?
No, so the code requires that the bio retention system has to drain within seventy-two hours. And we're permitted a maximum depth of storage of twelve inches within the pond. So we've completed source testing. One soil log impermeability test was completed within the basin. And the result is approximately one inch an hour. And that's the rate at which water will basically infiltrate back into the ground. So the water in this basin, over time, the infiltration rate will diminish. But it will never exceed seventy-two hours. Part of what the applicant's requirement is. That annual inspections will have to be completed on the system to ensure its functionality. In addition to that, every time it rains greater than one inch. The applicant is going to have to perform an inspection to make sure that the system goes dry. So there's going to be an ongoing maintenance responsibility on the applicant's behalf. To ensure that water never sits in this basin beyond three days. If that ever happens. Part of his requirement is going to be to notify, basically record it in the maintenance manual and then also notify the town. So that corrective measures can be then taken and that would could potentially involve performing inspections of the system to see what has happened. Perhaps even removal of the vegetation and the soil and replacing it. The bio retention makes over time sediment and pollution washes into it. It does slow down it. And that's where initially water might only sit in the basin for a few hours, but over time that period is going to extend. As at any point it gets to seventy-two hours, the applicant has to start remediation measures to either. Basically you remove all of the media and replace it or perform additional maintenance to ensure the system stays. Dry or goes dry within a seventy-two hour period.
All of those obligations get put into the stormwater and maintenance manual that gets recorded in the chain of title. That would be the responsibility of the community.
Correct.
Great. Um, fellow question. There are some existing mature trees along the existing fence line. Um, if you go scroll down a little bit.
I think it's on your list. I think that may actually show well on your survey.
Pump out where the pond area is. So. Yes, this tree right here. Can we get a commitment that would not be disturbed during the construction of fencing?
The tree is not on the applicant's property.
Right.
Um, however, it's certainly, it's certainly adjust defense in this area. To minimize any inclusion into the prep line.
And you'll make sure that any installation of the fence won't disturb grid systems or things like that?
Yes.
It's a mature tree.
It's a mature tree and the fence we're proposing requires discreet post. So it's any inclusion into the prep line is minimal.
So they use flexibility.
Alright.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a little different perspective. Um, my name is Ken Kovacs and I have a uh, a lease agreement with the landlord who's Jason. To the uh, west. Uh, thirty-nine mine street. And I have a couple of uh, questions. The first one, which I wasn't even thinking about was. You made a comment about raising the drainage. Did I hear right that the grade along the western side is not going to be touched?
So along the property line, the grade remains the same.
Could be same, so the current drainage that we see today is there will still be that way.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, and the reason why I asked that is. The property owner has flooding problems there and I just would not want to see it get worse. Um. The second question I have is this general use commercial space. The twenty-nine parking spots that you have allocated to this complex. Are any of those parking spots allocated to that commercial space? Or is that all based on the residential needs?
The parking is for both the merchant and residential.
How much of that parking is for the commercial space? I asked, there are a few parking spots on the outside, on the main road, on mine street. And. There seems to be a lot of competition for those spots and having. The uh, all these parking spots going to residents. It's going to probably going to put more pressure on the free parking.
Approximately ten market spaces. Is required for the commercial use. Nine point seven spaces.
And then when those, when that generally certain uh, commercial space is. Going to be put to use, does that like go through a whole other Google process and any public comment and all that?
So, but I can answer that because it's not actually an engineering question, but pardon me. If, if, if a, if a tenant comes forward and it's abused at the lab or in the zone. They sign a lease with the owner and we don't see it, it's not, we don't, it's not jurisdiction of us to do it. If the use is something that is not permitted. Or might trigger a parking question or all those things, that becomes the zoning officer's responsibility to. Say to the person, you can't do this here unless you come in for variance. So they, if, if there's possible future tenants. That wanted to do something more intensive than what's already allowed in there. Um, it could conceivably require somebody to come back to this board, but generally speaking. Uh, as long as it's something that's allowed for under the ordinance, we wouldn't see it again.
Okay. Okay, so we've got commercial parking. The garage.
Other questions for members of the public?
On chill and day gas that we change the nail street. We are on the north end that you're talking about with the creek. And runoff from the parking lots. As it is now. Our backyard is uninhabitable because of that runoff water. Mosquitoes breed back there. All the whaling of gasoline from Benell Street comes down the street. Goes into the parking lot through the culvert or whatever you call it. That's right there in the parking lot, out the pipe. And it just disperses all over our land, all of us on the north side of Benell. It's been like this. For a hundred years, I would say.
Okay, so I need you to form this into a question.
Okay. My point would be when the gentleman speaks to us about the other. Pipe that's going to feed the system that isn't going into run into this. I want to know where that other pipe is going to go and. How can they stop it? Because. In the parking lot of the school right now is already marked out in green paint. The path that this water takes. We go and take a look. Someone's already done it. And how it will feed out into this giant. I empties out back there with no regulation, no EPA, no anything.
Okay, so I'm going to ask if the engineer can answer the question about how conveyance. Is going to impact the discharge on the north side of Benell Street?
So the wood marking that was referred to, that was actually a markup completed by the borough. And that's how we identified that the two pipes that go, that discharges into the stream do not connect into the inlet within the school parking lot. Only one of the pipe connects in. So the great marking on the pavement is the borough marking out from the stream into the school. The applicant, I believe it was last week or the week prior, we actually excavated within Bonell Street. To find where the, basically the direction of the pipe. As it enters Bonell from the properties on the south side of Bonell. So. It's. The resident is correct in terms of the orientation of the pipe. Because part of it was marked by the borough and we essentially, there was a section that the borough couldn't access because the pipe has bends or angles in it. And their equipment couldn't get beyond that point. The borough came in from the downstream or the outside end of the pipe upstream. We actually came in from the other direction. So we know basically the entire configuration of the drainage system. As it leaves the applicant's property.
Okay, so then let me ask this follow up because I want to, I want, I want to make sure that, that she gets an answer to the question of. The discharge, the existing discharge testifies that there were two pipes that discharge into the creek right now?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any sense as to how, how that is functioning relative to flood control in these, in these, in these properties? Uh, on the north side of Benell. Is that in your conversations with TPW and your, your investigation into this stuff? Can you give some testimony as to what's going on over there now and how it's functioning and how it might need to get fixed? Whether or not it's. You're, you're an engineer, whether or not it's, it's not on your, it's not on the applicant's side, I understand that, but because he's.
So I do not have enough information to offer an opinion one way or the other in terms of what's happening at the backyard.
Okay. Questions? Yes, please.
Uh, my name is Missy Nimitz. I live at the corner of Benell Academy at twelve six. So I just have a clarification maybe question. So when they were talking about the new pipe that would come down. Um, from the property line, yep, out to Benell Street and that that would be new. It would not be attached necessarily into, it would be added to what's already there. Right? The, the one that goes forty-five across. The property on Benell in the yellow block. Um, there would be a new pipe that would go out to Benell Street.
Show which is new and show which is existing.
But I'm just saying, there'll be two pipes that go out, one because they don't know what is attached, correct?
Testimony was that there is the existing one.
That will stay.
And then there's this.
And then the new one that would go straight out to the. That pipe though, will that connect into the pipe that goes in the parking?
So there are two pipes in the park.
Okay.
So.
And they, but they both go into the stream that goes behind the house, correct?
Right.
Okay, but the new pipe will connect into that drainage that will also lead out into that creek, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll add. More water to that creek, is that correct?
No. So part of what the applicant's responsibility is in the stormwater design is that when we complete the analysis. We have to look at the existing site conditions, determine how much runoff leaves the property. Then we have to go through a posed development analysis and calculate how much runoff leaves the property. The regulations require us to. Determine compliance via a couple of different methods. One method is to look at the two ten and a one hundred year storms and then reduce those by a certain percentage, for instance fifty percent for the two year storm. Twenty-five percent for the ten and twenty percent for the hundred year storms. And that's one option that the applicant has. The second option that the applicant has is. When you calculate your existing and your developed conditions, I graph, you look at the peak rates. And if your existing conditions peak rate is less than the developed conditions. That's one mechanism that you can prove compliance. However, in addition to that, another criterion that's been established that is. We also have to look at the amount of water that's going into the stream. And what we have done is because this property is essentially fully developed, it has buildings, it has gravel, it has parking areas. When you calculate the existing conditions runoff for all three storm events. That existing conditions runoff is actually a little bit higher than the developed conditions runoff. In addition to that, what we're doing is infiltrating a certain volume of runoff from the site, which reduces the volume of runoff into the stream. Net, net, this project is going to produce less runoff in terms of volume and peak into the stream.
So I'm going to break that down into layman's terms to the last sentence that you just said. Which is, is it fair to say that we're going to have less volume and of water leaving our site? Than presently exists now?
Yes.
And is it going to be at a less of an intensity at, at the peak in terms of, do you have the highest storm? Then it would be than what's present at the present time?
Yes.
That's the layman's term.
Okay, well, it just seems to me.
Okay, let's do the questions.
Yeah, so, um, but I, I just wanted to point that out. I think when it was presented before, it almost sounded like. When she was asking about the runoff in that thing, it almost made it sound like it wasn't going to be part. Of what was attached in the parking lot. So I guess that was my question was bringing that to that it is.
Um, I want to make sure there's anyone who hasn't asked a question first before we go back to second. So Lowe's, please.
Lowes Stewart.
And we can, you can go from there.
They can't hear you on the screen.
So maybe we can just pass a microphone to Mr. Business. Yeah, I know, I don't want you to have to.
Thank you. Lowes Stewart coming. Um, I have. I wanted to ask about impervious coverage. That's a big thing with me. What is the impervious coverage now? What is proposed and what is permitted?
So currently the property has twenty-two thousand and twenty-six square feet of impervious coverage.
What is the percentage of the total lot?
Sixty-six point two percent.
I'm going to give, what are you proposing?
Uh, the total proposed impervious is twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty square feet.
Percentage?
Um, sixty-four point seven percent.
And what is permitted there?
Seventy-five percent.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now, you spoke frequently about a broken pipe that let some of the water go into that pipe. I assume you're going to fix that pipe. I assume you're going to fix that pipe, is that correct?
Yes.
And so how will the water that went through the broken part of the pipe get in there and be taken away?
So within the actual inlet, so typically inlet is just a rectangular box, it's sealed on all sides and the pipes go into and out of the box. What we have done as part of the detailing is that the pipe comes in, the pipe goes out, but on one side of the pipe where the grade is going to be lower is to create essentially a weir, an orifice within the box itself that will allow any of that surface water to pond as a result of sealing the system. It provides a mechanism that the water can get into the pipe. So you're creating, let me make sure I got this, you're creating additional points of inlet into the pipe because you're fixing the broken pipe? Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Um, the trees, how many are required for your development?
I cannot know. Do you wanna, you wanna defer to the architect for that answer that? Yes, okay, so we'll, we'll make sure they are.
Parking, I was a little confused because you said the parking required was thirty-two, you were going to provide twenty-nine, but then you said that you met the requirement, how does that happen? There's three different, three spaces different there.
So within the ordinance, whenever EV ready or EV parking spaces are provided, you're allowed to count each space as two parking spaces. So for instance, the three EV parking spaces that we're providing, you can count them as six parking spaces. So if you add the credit that's given for the EV parking spaces, you're actually at thirty-two parking spaces.
I see, so you only have to have one that counts for two if you have any theory.
Correct.
Um, how many variances with any are you seeking on this development?
So the applicant is seeking two variances.
What are they?
The first is a use variance for residential use within the condominium building on the ground floor. And then the second variance is a rare yard variance.
It's a what?
A rare setback variance.
Okay, that's the next question I was gonna ask was about setbacks. Um, I know the ordinance requires set side yard and backyard and front yard and are you in compliance with all of those setback requirements with the exception of the backyard?
Yes.
And what is the difference in the backyard between what is required and what you're suggesting?
So the ordinance requires a minimum rear, rear yard of fifty feet and the applicant is proposing twenty-three point three feet.
What's the existing rear yard?
Said existing rear yard is approximately four feet.
Right now with four feet from the nearest yard, we propose twenty-three point three feet.
Correct.
And that will be along the base. Or falls the water.
Fire tension.
Yes, that will be along the retention basement, the basin edge, is that correct?
So the basin itself is going to be located at about four feet from the property line, the wall for the basin, but there is suddenly or the northernmost residential unit, that's going to be twenty-three feet, twenty-three point three feet from the rear property line.
But you don't have to measure from the retention bas- basin, you only have to measure from the building?
Correct, the setback applies to the building.
Oh. I don't like that. Well, okay, I I guess that's it and I'll wait for the trees.
Yep.
For the other guy.
Okay, thank, um. If you could, if you could stop sharing for just a second, I wanna make sure there's nobody on line who I'm trying to make sure there's any more remote participants uh had a question. So there is, there is a hand up there. Um, so um, he, I give you permission to speak. A person in the, who's identified as Colleen, if you could please unmute yourself and identify your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Colleen Rosetti. I own a piece of property, twenty-twenty-two Park Avenue. And I've been listening to the descriptions regarding uh the flooding issue. So I, I'm not really familiar with what you're talking about, but will this also address the flooding that happens on my Park Avenue property? Um, substantial storms will flood our backyard and I've had my basement um, pumped numerous times by the fire department. So um, will this also, this remediation address that flooding?
So in terms of the flooding that's occurring of your property, oh, there's nothing that the applicant could do that can, to alleviate any of those concerns, um.
However, this water comes from that piece of property, it comes from the Burkitts property, goes across the uh Banel Street backyards and dumps into twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two Park Avenue. We've done remediation on our property to keep it from coming into the basement, but um, it's, it's substantial when we have a storm.
Well, Mr. Zetti, I just wanna let the engineer answer your question if we could. So what the applicant is required to do and what the applicant has done as a part of the design is to reduce the peak rate below what currently occurs on the property and reduce the volume of runoff from the property as compared to what presently occurs on site. It's going to have a beneficial impact to her property, but I suspect given the slight reductions that we're talking about, it's not going to be anything that's measurable, but it definitely will not exacerbate any issues that she's having. Okay, well, any, okay, uh, other questions? Is there another question in the audience? Yes, please.
I, I believe it's for the architects.
All right, that's fine, all right. All right, um, so there are no additional questions, thank you all, thank you, uh, Mr. Refrain, um. Do you wanna, you wanna take, you wanna move to your next witness?
Yeah, I don't want, it's, it's nine forty-six. Um, we've been doing it for four hours and forty-six minutes now. Um, and I think it would be better for everybody if our next witness started right, rather than time and start it now, I don't think we'll get room to start it.
Okay, that's, that's fine. So what uh we would, what we need to do is carry this uh to our, to a next, to a future meeting. So the board's next uh meeting is on October twenty-fourth. Um, we do already on the agenda.
We have a public hearing and a completeness.
Yeah, we have a completeness and we do have a scheduled notice public hearing, although it is the board's practice to to when matters first. Um, I also don't know about the availability of your witnesses and experts. Um, the meeting after that on November fourteenth, I would be honest with you, is wide open. Um, and uh so if, I'm gonna ask if you have a preference.
I am available on one fourth.
Does the continuing application goes to take precedence?
So could new? We tend to have continuing applications go first, I'm gonna be honest with you. The other one that is scheduled for a public hearing on uh, the twenty-fourth, we're still waiting on some drawings from them, so I don't know. I don't know. That's what I'm saying, because I don't know. I, I really just don't know. So it's, it's, it's possible that they may need to carry, but they are on the agenda as well, so we tend to do matters that are carried first after, we did a completeness as and things like that first.
We're like, we're always wanting to.
Twenty-fourth, yeah, fourteen minutes early means valid. So, okay, that's good to know.
I, I do prefer to start on the twenty-fourth. Okay, uh, which gives us the opportunity if something like this is known, we continue to the fourteenth any time. Everybody on my team is available on the twenty-fourth.
I'll check with our professionals twenty-fourth. Is there any members of the board who will not be here October twenty-fourth, just to make sure we're back? Okay, so um, what we will do then is we are pairing this matter to the Tuesday, October twenty-fourth meeting at seven PM um here at Borough Hall and hybrid via Zoom. No further notice will be given. Uh, for members of the public, it just means we're gonna pick it up where we are now at the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a few other chair items um on the agenda this evening. We have um what they said, we have a complete determination for last wellness, uh, we had those, well, have they noticed for words, that was a carry, right?
It was a carry, however, I did get an email today asking me to take a look at it, I noticed by searching. Honestly, I saw an email coming, I don't know why. I'll give you that.
We don't have revised plans yet, and it's, it's three weeks away, so I'm a little concerned that our potential to build. Yeah, but lawyer's not here, so we're not gonna ask. All right, so so, um, so, so where's your goal? Let's see what's going on with words.
They're not, they continue, um.
All right.
But again, I, I'll look at you now.
And I, and I also, just the other chair on, so just to reiterate, I asked Dawn to, I'm sorry, to, to um check with HBC about which November meeting we wanted to put um the presentation about the district uh.
State of Jones.
Basically, John has to go on the leading, which I suspect in my opinion. Um, we're probably gonna, maybe that's even, this one here, but we'll see about that. Any other chair items?
So I do have one, and I don't mean to be hardball, but um, the circle some. So we can't get a response from the applicant, but we did, and we did not get a response.
We got a response saying that there was the salt in the water, which they could be filtered in. They were expecting the display and plantings to be delivered within approximately two weeks and I think that was our August meeting. Followed up again before our September meeting, they did anything, sent a letter that the board directed me to send after our September meeting, and that's my.
So I guess my, my question is, I know that we put money, we got the opportunity for money in Astro and I'm asking the board, what legal, what can we do to fix that site? I don't care if we tear the plants out, I don't care if we bring them, uh, but it's just a dead wall, I just, I, I feel like we're being uh, slinging a little bit, uh, and I just don't know what to do. I mean, we put these things, you know, this applicant put up a lot of money to, to have this, you know, to, to be able to say, oh, if it, if it goes vacant, well, it's not really vacant. I thought we had money in there that could at least go in there and breathe. So it's, 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 the problem is, is that that was for post project, and I don't know the terms of what that law.
And Espro.
Yeah.
Were to do certain things, but the intention was post-completion. Now, that being said, that doesn't necessarily mean that there may not be other avenues, state completion, dissatisfaction, the resolution ongoing, what we should condition.
But yeah, I just, I, I, I guess I think, I, I understand Jeff, that it's, it's supposed to be when it was completed, it's supposed to be this, it's supposed to be that. But there comes a time when we're four years later, and, and again, I think it's, it's, it was coming along very well. So something, we're not being told something, I just don't know how to get an answer.
I, I agree with you, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to.
So I guess my, Mike's, my question, just to be clear, is um, I'd like to ask Kara, is there any legal avenue that we can take other than sending a letter that says the board would like to know what you're doing, because that didn't work?
It didn't, it absolutely didn't. Um, the only other thing that I can think of is this point is to arm going there.
All right, so let's do that and see, see what else we can do.
And it's I don't, we go off the top of my head, I'll go back and look, but you know, to indicate that, I'm pretty sure I said last time that the board's going to put in whatever actually we can take in, including burnout. Um, without, you know, making any threatening statements, just to say this would be the next step, speak, speak out, but we figure something out.
Yeah, I mean, so there's, there's resolution compliance on our end, then there's property maintenance, which is a thorough.
Correct.
Position.
Correct.
And it's, it's, we don't, we don't have, we don't have our council record, we don't have the there here, so we can't fully flush that possibility out, but I think it's worth.
And again, like I said, I'm not trying to be, be difficult, because I do think it's pretty as it, and there's certain things that were done. No, but they, 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 they did what they said they were going to do, but then they sort of stopped.
All right, any other chair items?
Jeff, I, I have a question for Kara. Can we um, for the billboard, can we have the owner come into the planning board and address our concerns?
I mean, we can't force them to. Um, it certainly adjusted.
I, I, I think Mike's not this, maybe we say that we, we, we need them to appear and speak to resolution compliance.
That's, that's exactly, if we can take it to that look at it in that means.
Yeah.
Then I think that.
We are jerking. It's a good idea, okay. Any other chair items? All right, uh, bills were circulated before the meeting, can I get a motion on bills?
So move.
Mr. Cook?
Yeah.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Champion?
Yes.
How much now?
Yes.
Skiffen?
Yes.
This point's done?
Yes.
No?
Yes. Uh, any train reports, engineer? No, no report. Anything from planners, Jay, anything?
No report.
They need to go to executive session. They got a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All papers say aye? Aye, everyone.